Again.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, March 22nd, 2021 City of Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to Order. This time, I'll state the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I would like to ask Karen Fandora, Commission liaison, to call the roll.
Yes, sir. Planning Commissioner Byron Kradoff.
Commissioner Kradoff here.
Commissioner Jacob Honeycutt. Commissioner Lynn Banks.
Commissioner Lynn Banks, present.
Commissioner Ken Phillips.
Commissioner Ken Phillips, present.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel. Commissioner Mitchell Peel. We'll come back to Mitchell. Commissioner Travis Graham.
Commissioner.
I got you, Mitchell, thank you. Commissioner Travis Graham.
Commissioner Travis Graham, present.
Commissioner Susan Stokelberry is absent. Commissioner Tom Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, present.
Commissioner Ashley Hoes.
Commissioner Ashley Hoes here.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel.
Commissioner Lakeisha Veal, as well as absent, and Chair Sanderson, Chad Sanderson.
Chair Chad Sanderson is here.
Okay. This evening, we also have Mike Mallon, Director of Community Development, Matt Wright, Assistant Director of Community Development, Nathan Jury, Senior Planner, Adam Hilgadick, City Engineer, Jackie Summer, City Attorney, Jerry Kahler, Councilmember District One, Mayor Protem, and Jim Lee Cock, our Public Sonographer.
All right, thank you, Karen. So we have some public hearings tonight, so I'm going to go through the public hearing procedures, and then I'm going to announce all the agenda items. For the public hearing, we'll open the public hearing and call for exhibits from the City Attorney. We'll have the staff presentation and comments. We'll ask the applicant if they would like to make a presentation, ask for witnesses in favor, we'll ask for witnesses opposed, and then have general questions and discussion, and then we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion. The agenda items tonight, item one is called to order and consent agenda. Item two is a public hearing, vacation, VAC, 0221-7662, for 2900 Northwest Hunter Drive. Item three is a public hearing, planning unit development, concept plan, PUDC 0221-7669, for Brookside Estates at Chapman Farms, and that'll be heard with item six, which I'll get to in a second. Item four is a public hearing, rezoning, RZ 0221-7659, proverb states. Item five, public hearing, planning unit development, concept plan, PUDC 0221-7661, proverb states. And item six, preliminary plat, PP 0221-7668, Brookside Estates at Chapman Farms. Then other business is item seven, and item eight is adjournment. First time on the agenda is a consent agenda for the meeting minutes from the March 8th, 2021, and do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Peel.
Yes, thank you Chair. March 8th. Meeting.
Commissioner. Commissioner Peel, yeah, you're kind of breaking up just a little bit. Can you try just one more time and state that?
Let me try this again. Yes, just. Commission meeting minutes be approved as submitted staff.
Karen, is that, are you good with that, or are you?
Yes, no, that would be all right.
Somebody else do.
Very good. Commissioner Banks, you want to be recognized.
Thank you Chair. This is Commissioner Banks, I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Byron Kradoff.
Commissioner Kradoff, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hoes.
Commissioner Ashley Hoes, aye.
Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
That motion is carried unanimously. We are getting quite a bit feedback somewhere, and so if you could please mute your device until called upon, we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is item two, vacation, VAC 0221-7662, for 2900 Northwest Hunter Drive, and I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the vacation and call for exhibits from our City Attorney, Jackie Summer.
Yes, Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on March 6th, 2021. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title 4 Land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Thank you very much. Now I'll ask on Mr. Jury, I think you're going to be presenting for the city.
Thank you Chair Sanderson and Planning Commissioners. Before you tonight is a request to vacate a 15-foot utility easement, generally situated, you can see here on the aerial, across the middle of Lot 12 of the Mill Springs Business Park subdivision. It runs from east to west on that property. Property is addressed at 2900 Northwest Hunter Drive, generally located east of Hunter Drive, roughly 350 feet south of Pink Hill Road. This property is zoned light industrial, or LI. It is currently undeveloped and has actually never been developed. Never been developed since it was first platted in 1986. So that was, that lack of development is likely partially due to the existing easement on the property, which the property owner is requesting to vacate tonight. The legal description and the exact location was provided by the surveyor. You can see the drawing here showing the exact location of the sewer, as well as the easement itself that the sewer was located in. There is a new easement in a dash line that runs from the east side of the property towards the southern portion, and then runs west from there. The, the property owner has moved the existing sewer from the existing easement and moving it to, and has moved it to the new location and the new easement, which has been dedicated. So all utility companies have provided their.
Excuse me, if you, if you are not speaking at this time or not recognized, can you please mute your phone or device? Thank you.
So all utility companies have provided their written or emailed consent with this, for this vacation request. As I mentioned before, Public Works did originally object due to the existing sewer infrastructure running in the easement that did serve nearby private developments. However, that sewer has been moved, relocated into the newly dedicated easement farther south on the private property without impacting any existing private sewer services. So approval of this vacation would make the underlying property more developable. Staff does, did review this vacation request under the review criteria and does find that it's consistent with said criteria. So staff does recommend approval of the vacation with two conditions, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Are there any questions for the city by the commissioners at this time? Okay. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Jury. Is the applicant available if they would like to make a presentation or say anything in addition to what Mr. Jury has presented?
Hi, this is John Rose from Rubenite Directive Development, who owns the property. We have nothing further, we appreciate your help.
All right. Thank you. I guess, I guess, is there any questions for the commission, for the applicant by any commissioners? And if so, Mr. Rose will have to have you swear in, since it's public hearing. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Seeing none. I'll ask for witnesses in favor of this application. Any witnesses opposed to this application? Any final questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, seeing none. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion on this vacation. Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the public hearing vacation, VAC-02-21-7662, the 2900 Northwest Hunter Drive, the vacation of the 15-foot utility easement with the two-staff conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks, we have a motion, and Commissioner Peel.
Yeah, hopefully you can hear me this time. I second the motion for Commissioner Banks.
Very good. So we have a motion and a, and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Ken Phillips. Planning Commissioner Ken Phillips.
Sorry, Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Travis Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hoes.
Commissioner Ashley Hoes, aye.
Commissioner Kradoff.
Commissioner Kradoff, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
That motion carried unanimously.
Very good. So that vacation will be heard by the City Council there Monday, April 5th, 2021, meeting at 6:00 PM. This is all the testimony to be heard on this item, so if you would like to lead the meeting, please do so now.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, the next items on the agenda is items three and six, the PUD concept plan, PUDC 0221-7669, and preliminary plat, PP 0221-7668, for Brookside Estates at Chapman Farms. And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the PUD concept plan and call for exhibits from the City Attorney, Jackie Summer.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Excuse me, two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on March 6th, 2021. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title 4 Land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. Eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. And nine, a letter from Jeff Bauer.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Wright, I think you're presenting for the city.
Yep. Thank you Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. Before you this evening, our request for a planning and development concept plan and a preliminary plat for an 80-lot, single-family subdivision known as Brookside Estates at Chapman Farms. The 29 and a quarter acre property is located west of Southwest 7 Highway, on both sides, both north and south of Southwest Brookside Drive. This property is located east of the Estates at Chapman Farms and is currently zoned SF7RO with a PUD, which is single-family, planning and development, and a restricted overlay. Proposed base zoning district of SF7 is proposed to remain in place. The purpose of the public hearing is for a concept plan amendment, which amends an earlier plan from 2004 for this property. The proposed concept plan, which is on the screen, again encompasses the 29.25 acre property, and includes 80 single-family lots and six common open space tracks, proposed to be completed in three phases. Phasing lines are distinguished on the plan. The plan will generally develop from south to north. The plan that's on the screen, north is on the left-hand side, south is on the right-hand side. So developing, the first phase would be on the south side of Brookside Drive, second phase on the north side, and the third phase would be working up to Mason School Road to make a connection that's in line with Orchard Lane, which is on the north side of Mason School that ties into the townhouse development to the north. Access to this site will be provided through local street extensions off of Brookside Drive as well as Mason School Road. There aren't any collector streets that are developed as they're already in place. However, there will be some collector street sidewalk requirements along both Brookside Drive and Mason School Road where those have not been made as part of the previous street improvements. Otherwise, all new streets will meet the minimum 50-foot rideaway, standard residential streets with a minimum four-foot sidewalks on at least one side of the street. Some blocks will have sidewalks on both sides of the street for increased connectivity to amenities. That would include Southwest Orchard Court, which is at the kind of large cul-de-sac at the southeast corner of the site in Phase 1, and then on Whispering Willow Court, which is at the northwest corner of the site, sidewalks on both sides of the street there to connect to the amenities and the trail that will run along the stream buffer. As part of the PUD, minimum lot and development standards are required to be established for this property. Through the PUD, the applicant is requesting reduced lot sizes and setbacks that deviate from the minimum neighborhood lot standards. Those reductions include a reduction to 6,600 square feet for the minimum lot size, and a minimum 60-foot lot width for the non-cul-de-sac lots. Cul-de-sac lots will be a minimum of 50 feet, which is what is required, the minimum required by code. Plan also requests a reduction in corner lot setbacks from 25 feet to 15 feet, and then side setbacks from eight feet to five feet. These reductions will still provide the desired number of lots while accommodating the stream buffer that runs generally north-south through the center of the property. These reductions also provide less lawn maintenance while still accommodating houses that are in keeping with the design of nearby subdivisions. Landscape buffers for the site are required adjacent to all the commercial zoning properties along 7 Highway, including those that are in unincorporated Jackson County. The minimum buffers range from 15 feet to 25 feet, however, in most areas, those buffers are 30 to 40, in some cases greater than that in terms of the width. So they significantly provide a more buffering than required adjacent to the commercial properties, both the east property boundaries as well as the south property boundaries. The minimum open space requirement for this property is 28%, which was established under the 2004 Chapman Farms master plan. The site, the concept plan and the preliminary plat provides 36.9% open space, or 10.79 acres, which is meeting and exceeding that 28% requirement. The amenities proposed for the subdivision include an eight-foot asphalt trail that will be generally along the stream buffer and will tie into the Estates of Chapman Farms trail system on both the southeast corner, sorry, southwest corner and northwest corners of the property. Also, as part of that trail, there will be a bridge crossing over the stream buffer, as well as a playground and a play court at the northwest corner of the site along the cul-de-sac of Whispering Willow Court. Proposed, the proposed minimum floor area classification for all homes in the subdivision is 1,100 square feet. This is three steps below the minimum for the Estates of Chapman Farms, which has a minimum 1,700 square foot requirement for three-car garage ranch houses. The applicant is requesting this reduction to provide additional housing options and to create a transition from smaller homes to larger homes, working east to west from 7 Highway. Conceptual front elevations have been provided in the packet and are also shown on the screen that generally show single-style, single-story homes with front-loaded garages. Due to the lot widths, most homes will only be able, or most lots will only be able to accommodate a two-car garage, although some larger home, larger lots may be able to accommodate a three-car garage. Included in the packet are architectural design styles, or sorry, architectural design standards that are provided to provide additional enhancements beyond the minimum requirements that we currently have in place for single-family homes. Those design standards are designed to ensure that these design elements are carried throughout the subdivision regardless of who the lots are sold to or who builds the homes on the lots. Those standards include material requirements, front entry design features, garage door design standards, the addition of decorative elements to each building, and those decorative elements are intended to make each house unique while still having a cohesive design standard throughout the neighborhood. The architectural styles that are in the images generally are predominantly ranch house with craftsman and farmhouse design features. Final architectural designs must be provided with the PUD final plan. Staff has also included a condition that the design standards address front porch design. As one of the standards is that at least 50% of all the homes have to have a front porch. Staff would like more details on minimum porch sizes as well as the setback variations with the porches, whether they be recessed like the plan to the left on the screen where it is behind the garage wall, or whether it projects beyond the garage wall like the house on the right-hand side here. So just some additional variation in minimum house, or minimum porch sizes, since that is a predominant feature on a lot of the homes. Staff did review the proposed development under the PUD concept plan review criteria, which are on pages eight through 10 of the staff report. Staff does believe that the requested modifications to the minimum lot sizes, width, setbacks, and house sizes are warranted by the enhanced architectural design standards, the increased landscaping buffer, buffering adjacent to commercially zoned properties, as well as the protection of the stream buffer that runs through the center of the site. Staff has noted that the concept plan is not entirely consistent with the comprehensive plan and the area plan, as the proposed development has a much lower density of 2.74 units per acre, whereas the comprehensive plan and the area plan call for moderate and high-density residential on the subject property of five to 12 units an acre, and in some cases, greater than 12 units per acre. However, the proposed concept plan is generally in keeping with the original 2004 Chapman Farms PUD, which predated the comp plan, which did designate the property for smaller lot, single-family subdivision, though the proposed plan has removed the age restrictions and the maintenance provided designation that was part of the previous approval. Although the plan is at a lower density, the smaller lot, single-family plan still provides an appropriate transition from future commercial development along 7 Highway and the larger lot, single-family homes to the west. Additional housing units in this area will continue to support future commercial development in the Chapman Farms area, including commercial development that will be within walking distance of the subdivision. With that, staff does recommend approval of the PUD concept plan with six conditions, as well as the preliminary plat with six conditions, and I will be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
Yes, Mr. Wright, are there any questions for Mr. Wright at this time from the commissioners? All right. Go ahead and, thank you, Mr. Wright. We'll move to the applicant. If there's an applicant who would like to make a statement or make a presentation, you'll need to be, you need to state your name and address and be sworn in.
Yes, hi, my name is Peter Ward. My address is 9313.
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Ward, Mr. Ward, I think if you're, if you're one of the folks that are wanting to speak in favor or opposition, your portion will be coming up here very shortly, but if you could just hold on.
Okay, I apologize.
Yep, no, no problem at all. Is there a Mr. Kenny, or a Mr. McCoy, or a Mr. Sperrit that's wanting to speak on the applicant's side?
Hi, I'm here, Bill McCoy.
Okay, yeah, is, does the applicant have any additional presentation they want to make, or if they do, they need to be sworn in?
Okay.
Mr. McCoy.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. McCoy, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this case to be the truth? I hope you got.
Yes, I do, I do swear.
Okay, I need your name and address.
Uh, Bill McCoy, 514 South Shore Drive, Lake Winnebago, Missouri.
Okay.
So yeah, Mr. McCoy, if you have anything in addition that you want to add on to what Mr. Wright said, then the floor is yours to make any additional comments.
I don't, I don't think I have too much to add. We were just trying to come up with a, a really nice plan that would transition from the, from the commercial back to the, to the single-family. We, we obviously run the Chapman Farms right now, and with the idea that there's going to be multifamily in between there, we tried to come up with a very cohesive, good-looking design that would allow for a, for a nice transition that, you know, we'd be, you know, proud to put our names on. I don't know if you guys have any specific questions for me on any of it. We went back and forth and worked with the city staff on this and tried to come up with some good ideas, and we feel like it's a really good plan to put together.
Okay, um, yeah, so if there's any questions from the commissioners at this time for the applicant, please, please state that now. Commissioner Banks.
Thank you Chair. Mr. McCoy, have you met with the homeowners on this project yet?
We have, we have sent out an email to the homeowners with the complete packet that we sent to you folks, and we have a meeting scheduled with them. I think it's April 1st, I think there's a copy of that in the packet. Let me see if I can go down to it. With the owner being out of town and just some other logistics going on, that was the first time we could get to them, but we wanted to get this packet out to them to answer any questions or facilitate anything that needed to be. I know the last time something came before you, it was pretty intense, and so we were trying to head that off. I'm just scrolling through the packet to see the exact date of when we're supposed to meet with them, but, but they did get everything that we sent out.
I believe it says April 1st.
April 1st, yeah, April 1st, yep.
Okay, could I ask you, are you planning to sell these or rent them out?
Our plan is to sell them, single-family for sale.
Okay, and is there any particular reason, except that you want to get them all sold, that you went from the, what was previously approved, age-restricted maintenance provided to not?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the previous was. Yeah, so uh, yeah, so the previous was a maintenance provided, um, um, and had a 1,200 square foot uh, uh, minimum square footage. We asked for a reduction to 1,100 square foot, and we went away from the maintenance provided in the 55 and older project. Basically, right now, the cost of uh new construction is, is going up um at a very rapid pace, and we're trying to uh build a product that would be uh geared to um, to all walks of life, um, regardless of the age. Um, everybody's feeling the pinch um with the higher prices of being able to try to find a house for themselves. And, and, and with doing that, we, we stayed with the ranch-style plans so they could accommodate both families and/or, you know, folks that are older in retirement. Uh, we have, we have a lot of residents in uh, in Chapman Farms that are older folks that we predominantly have built the ranches and reverses for, and, and we haven't been able to um provide a product at a, at a, a uh more palatable price point per se for other families. So with this um project and with the pricing that we're getting um currently in the industry, it's just really hard to uh, um, to provide something for everybody, and that's what we're trying to do by opening this up for, for all different walks of life. If that answers your question, I'm sorry.
I do have one more question. Um, if I can remember what it was. Oh, I know what it was. Uh, you said the thing. Um, it appears that these properties back on, I think, um, let me look at it real quick. I had it. Here it is. Excuse me. That they're all going to be to the uh trail line as far as their backyards, the walking trail, is that correct? The backyard property lines are going to be, I think it's 74 through 80, and then one through six.
Yeah, there is a, yeah. It does appear, I'm looking at the uh, where that uh comes over the creek and then hits that uh, hits that wooden bridge, and then he enters back in between the uh Chapman Farms and Brookside, there is a trail system there that goes back there, correct? And then that dumps out. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, no.
No, and, and that goes over to Brookside, um, which then on the other side of Brookside, there's another uh trail system that wraps in behind Chapman Farms there.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait and, and listen, and then I'll come back in if there's any other questions. Okay, thank you.
Uh, you bet.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Is there any other questions from the commissioners at this time for the applicant? Okay. All right, well, we will uh, uh, move on to witnesses. Uh, thank you, Mr. McCoy, there may be other questions here in a minute, uh, but uh, um, so at this time, we'll ask for witnesses that are in favor of this application.
And those that are in favor, if, if you could, please unmute your device. If you're using a cell phone, just click the mute function to unmute, and if you're using a landline, click star six and just state your full name, please.
So yeah, just one real quick, any, any witnesses in favor? Okay. All right, uh, so we'll now ask for witnesses in opposition. And I know we have one speaker form at a minimum, and that'd be Mr. Ward. If you could state your name and be sworn in, and then you'll need your, your full name and address, please.
Yes, hi, thank you. My name is Peter Ward, and my address is 9313 Sanami Court in Lee's Farm.
Mr. Ward, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, so Mr. Ward, um, if you want to uh make, make your comments now, that would be, that would be fine.
Uh, yes, yes, hi, I, I purchased a lot number 35, um, which borders the first, I guess, the first seven lots that uh, that come in, to the first phase, I believe. Um, I have a, a couple of concerns. One is when I purchased the lot, I was told that this was going to be 55 and older when they developed it for my developer. Um, I, as I know that that's not, um, doesn't look like that's going to happen. So, um, and then I looked, looked at the, after looking at it, I could see that it's just crammed. So I'll basically have three lots invading, you know, basically my privacy with kids, I guess, now. So, um, you know, I, I have a huge concern with that. Um, I, I don't believe I would have purchased a half a million dollar home if I was uh looking at three lots that were going to probably be about eye level with my, with my deck outside. Um, on top of that, I believe I looked and saw where they're trying to actually uh pinch them in as well, so I guess the distance between the houses or, um, it, it just doesn't seem to be uh cohesive to a, a, a name of the Estates of Chapman Farms. There's nothing to state about a 6,500 square foot lot. Um, you know, I think, uh, so that, those are my biggest concerns, the size of the homes, the size of the lot, uh, you know, my privacy, um, it will be, be pretty much gone. I don't even think they have an easement pass, uh, the, the trail walkway, so I guess the lot's going to go completely through the trail, um, where that, that doesn't look like anything of what we have now, um, currently. So that's a frustration, but it does, I do seem to think that it looks like they're just stacking the lots, especially the first six lots are, are completely stacked against our, you know, our backyards. Um, and, and you know, so I mean, I just want to know, what can we do about it? Is there anything we can do about it? I mean, I, I assume that, you know, we would have, our developer would have, would have talked to us and showed us the, the concept of this, this design before he was getting approval from you guys. I mean, I'm not exactly sure how it works, if there's different levels or what, but you would have thought that our, our developer would have gotten us all together and said, hey, listen, this is our game plan, this is what we're going to submit. Instead, you know, we've got this, and then, then they're going to talk to us about it on that 1st of April, which I don't understand. Um, on top of that, all the um, the, the signages and everything that were stating that we were going to have this meeting are, are not even in the subdivision. I don't know when they were up, I never saw them. The only one I saw today when I rode by was the, one on the far other corner. So I don't know if it was wind or what, but there's, there's nothing stating that we were having this besides some, uh, a letter that I did receive. Um, and unfortunately, I, I got that on Saturday. So those are my concerns. You know, I don't know how you guys can, I mean, how you can help, or what, what thought processes you may have, but you know, um, the thought of basically having three, three yards looking into my backyard is really disappointing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ward. Are there any questions for this uh witness by the commissioners?
Commissioner Crowell.
I'll come to you next, uh, Commissioner Crowell, uh, Commissioner Peel.
Yes, thank you, Chair, hopefully you can hear me. Uh, I had a question for Mr. Ward, if it, uh, when the apartment construction was, uh, started or they had proposed going in there, if he was against that as well?
Uh, yes, I was, and the reason I was because it was a rental um aspect. Um, actually, if I look, if I, you know, if you go back and look at it from my bit, and it wasn't just for my benefit, but if you look at it, the proposal that was there had a huge easement in front of my house. I didn't have any, any, any lot or any people staring in, in, in front of me, but I did propose that because I, I'm concerned also about the value of my home, and I'm not exactly sure what 11 foot, 1,100 square foot home would do to the value of my home either.
Understood. Uh, did you say that you had the property label number 35, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ward, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you for your time, thanks, commissioners.
Uh, one, one moment, um, Mr. Ward, uh, Commissioner Crowell, you had a question.
Yes, uh, Mr. Ward, could you share with the commission, uh, what source did you receive the information about the 55 and older?
Oh, that was when I purchased my lot. Well, I guess they had, they were, my developer currently was telling me that that was what was going to go in um across from us, is that. So it's 55 and older. And also, we were told that, you know, when we opposed the, the uh, you know, the whole rental concept of the, of the last guy, we were told that, you know, it was going to be 55 and older.
And who, who shared that information with you? What was your source?
Oh, it was my developer.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
There any additional questions for the witness by the commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Ward, um, you're mentioning the properties that will be abutting your property. Uh, I gather there's no fencing along your property line and the other property lines that will join, I guess it's the trail that's going to be between you and the other property line?
No, ma'am, I mean, there's a, there's an easement on our side, but it doesn't look like they're putting any kind of easement or anything, it's just going to butt right up to the back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Uh-huh.
Any additional questions for Mr. Ward from the commissioners? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ward, appreciate your time. Are there any additional witnesses in opposition to this application? Okay. Uh, seeing none, um, uh, Mr. McCoy, I, I'll ask if you have any additional uh comments that you want to make to the commission based off of uh the witnesses?
Uh, the only thing I would say is that, that we have tried to um have a density that's far less than um multifamily. I believe it was pointed out that they could go up to maximum 12 units, and we're like at 2.1 something, and so our density is, is quite significant, um, we lower than that, and also that the lot size really is only 600 square feet difference than what um the other plan was. And so even with the additional green space and all the other different amenities, we, we've tried to uh put everything in there the best we could um to uh, to kind of go above and beyond for the density, green space, and the architectural control stuff.
Uh, when you guys have a second, I apologize, it took me a second to get unmuted. Uh, can you state your name real quick? Sure, Aaron Rymel. Is, I'm sorry, are you, are you uh with the applicants or wanted to speak in? Okay, all right. Uh, okay, are we still, Karen, are we still going to go through that, is that fine?
Um, yes, if he could um get sworn in, and then if he could state his full name and address and spell his last name, that would be great.
Sure, Aaron Rymel, R-I-M-E-L, and I...
Mr. Mr. Rymel, uh, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, so help you God?
I do indeed.
Thank you.
Can I get your address?
Yes, ma'am, my address is 1109 Southwest Conk Way.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I, I would like to agree with what Mr. Ward had stated, that we've, we've been here since 2016, and our developer Doug has consistently stated that he was for a 55 and older and retirement home, and I understand costs are up, but that also means when I sell my home, it's already worth a lot more than it was four years ago. So I understand that costs are up, but so are home sales. So I feel like that point is a bit moot. Um, past that, um, if Ward act, if Ward looks deeper into the lot inspection, he actually will back up to about five different lots in his lot. I'm also concerned that um the Estates of Chapman Farms will now be connected to the neighborhood to the north, and if I was a 16-year-old kid and I had to choose between two stoplights, I would cut through the Estates of Chapman Farms every time to go to my neighborhood. So I'm, I, I'm concerned that there's going to be a, an increase in traffic through the neighborhood, and a lot of our um trails, quote unquote, turned into sidewalks. So now we have a lot more kids that don't have trails, and it's really just widened sidewalks in our neighborhood. So if we start having a lot more cut-through, then there's a lot more traffic coming through what, where there's a bunch of families walking their kids. Um, additionally, we're putting in, there's a large neighborhood going into our north, and they have all kinds of amenities. They have a swimming pool, they even have some hammock land, I don't know. It, I mean, they're, they have all kinds of things over there. We already have a pool that is $20,000 in debt, in need of repairs, and so we're building a neighborhood in front of ours that doesn't have any amenities, and I'm concerned that whenever you remove the 55 and older and you remove the maintenance provided, now you just have a bunch of lower-priced homes without any true amenities other than a swingset, and I can get that at Costco. So I'm really worried that we're not bringing, we, we, we came to you a year ago and spoke about Blue Springs needed a neighborhood of, you know, higher-priced homes, and we're certainly seeing that, but now here we are with the same developer, now that it, all the lots are sold, riddling them with um other things that are on the edge and lower-priced, trying to get the price home to make them more affordable. I get that, and I, I appreciate that. Um, but where's the drive? Where's the amenities and all the other things? So I absolutely oppose jamming everything in, changing what used to be four cul-de-sacs into a, a through street that now connects multiple neighborhoods through ours. Um, I, I don't know what else to say other than that. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer that. All right, thank you, Mr. Rymel. Is there any questions for Mr. Rymel for, from the uh commissioners? Okay, uh, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Rymel, appreciate it. All right, uh, let's see, so is there any other, I'll open it up one more time, I guess, for uh witnesses in opposition?
Yes, hi, I just had one other question, this is Peter Ward.
Mr. Ward.
Um, what are the effects of the, of the value going to be of my home in comparison when you put small lots in there?
So I won't, won't say the commissioner will have an answer to that, and I can, I can certainly ask staff, I don't know if they have that data, uh, but we can, we can certainly ask Mr. Wright if he has any information on that.
Um, that might actually be a better question for the applicant or developer. Um, they're probably a little bit more aware of the uh, the real estate impacts.
Okay, so Mr. Ward will, uh, if you have any other questions, please, please present them, but we'll, uh, we'll let the uh developer and the applicant uh come back and answer any other questions. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, um, uh, Mr. McCoy, do you want to, do you want to uh answer any of those other final uh comments or questions?
Well, um, I'd be just shooting from the hip and I hate to shoot from the hip. Um, you know, with the, uh, price of new homes, um, going above two hundred dollars a square foot and with the, uh, sizes, whether they were maintenance-provided buildings or, um, traditional single-family, they're all gonna be about the same size, um, on either plan, the price per square foot is, is going up, which then raises the average price of a, uh, resale home. And it continues to, new construction continues to bring up the values of resale homes. That's just, that's, that's just the nature of how the economics work as, um, right now, if you take, so, you know, Mr. Ward lives there in, in that area right there. From the time when we first started that new home subdivision, we were selling houses at, you know, three hundred thousand and now we're selling houses at six hundred and fifty thousand. And, and that has brought the other houses up in resale. So the natural trajectory is these homes that we're proposing are gonna have a higher square footage cost per square foot than, they'll be pricing the highest ones in town. And so when you go on a square footage basis, it's even gonna increase that much more. So the economics generally go in step with new construction, sets the, uh, sets the higher standard and then the resale follows that. And what we've seen over the last couple of years is, is resales just continue, the average price of resales just continue to go up. Um, during the downturn in Lee Summit, the average price of a, uh, resale house was about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Blue Springs was right around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at that time. As we've continued to, uh, go now, the average price for a new construction home during the last downturn was right around three hundred and fifty thousand. Now the average price for a new construction home is, uh, upwards of five hundred thousand. And when you take a look at what the average resale price is, it's right around four hundred thousand. And, and, and so what has happened and it continues to do so over time is it raises the price. So I don't personally believe that it's going to impact it, um, in any negative form or fashion.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Is there any question, any additional questions by the Commissioners at this time? Any other discussion, um, by the Commissioners before we close the public hearing? Uh, Commissioner Peel.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask staff if there were any other opposition letters that were submitted other than Exhibit Nine.
Um, no, there were not. We did, um, receive four returned letters, uh, one hundred and eighty-five-foot letters that were mailed out on March eighth, but they, um, it was for the Orchard at Chapman Farms, Abba Homes, uh, DAK Realty and Walker Custom Homes. But we received no other opposition letters.
Okay, thank you, Karen. I was gonna ask about the one hundred and eighty-five foot as well. But thank you, Chair.
Any other, uh, comments from any other Commissioners at this time? Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if this is the time that I need to, to share my concerns or if you'd like for me to wait till after you've closed the hearing.
Uh, yeah, so if you have any other questions, let's, let's, uh, do those and then we'll, we'll close the public hearing and have any other final comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Which may be, may be very quickly. All right. Okay, any other final, I'll open it, I'll just leave it for one more minute and, uh, any other final questions? Okay. Hearing none, uh, we're gonna close the public hearing and, uh, any other, any other, I guess, uh, Commissioner Banks? You had a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My biggest concern was that, uh, in two thousand and four, we'd approved this as senior housing and that's what, I know we went through the multifamily, so, and we went through all of that, but, um, to go back not to have it be senior housing is the, I guess, the developer stress to the, or expressed to the homeowners at that time. My other concern is that the property's gonna be abutting up next to their proper, to the trail, not allowing any buffer between, uh, the homes that are being, gonna be built and, you know, these are half-million-dollar homes that, uh, are being, abutting it without any privacy fence or buffering. Um, and the five-foot, five-foot property setbacks on both sides. I sit close to the neighbor next door and I can't imagine only five foot on both sides, so. Um, and it is more than one step down from seventeen hundred down to eleven hundred square feet. And those are my concerns, so I wanted to share that. Uh, those are some of my greater concerns. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Any other, uh, yes, Commissioner Peel.
Yes, so I would kinda like to say, uh, in support of, uh, Commissioner Banks' concerns as well. I just wanted to put that in front of the Commission.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Peel. Any other comments before we call for a motion? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Billups.
Sorry, I, I hadn't minded on actually saying anything. Uh, when I first looked at this plan, I thought, okay, we have moved so far above and beyond what we looked at a year ago with the multifamily. And I was very, very impressed with it. Um, I'm very impressed with the additional design standards that he has put on, uh, specifically the, um, requirement for the transom windows on the sides of the houses and the wraparound of the bricks and the stone or whatever, so that you don't just have that, um, board placed on the front of the building, uh, I think was the way he described it. Um, I, I don't agree with Commissioner Banks and Commissioner Peel. Uh, I think this is a great, great improvement over what was, uh, put to us a year ago. Um, I'm in favor of it. It, um, I think we have a tendency right now to just, everything, we, everything has to be senior living and we, we've approved a lot of senior living and I, I think we need to do some for, you know, everybody else to it at some point. Um, I think this is a good transition between the re, uh, between the commercial development and the estates. Um, I, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how to phrase all that, but I, I'm in favor of this plan.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Billups. Any other comments from Commissioners before we call for a motion? Okay. Hearing none, then I would ask for a motion for the PUD concept plan. Uh, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Chair Sanderson. I would move to recommend approval of the Planned Unit Development Concept Plan, PUDC dash zero-two dash two-one dash seven-six-six-nine with the six staff conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. We have a motion and I'll next recognize Commissioner Billups.
Yes, and based on what I just said, I would second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Uh, this will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Mitchell Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, nay.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Ashley Hose, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, no.
Commissioner Billups.
Commissioner Billups, aye.
Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
That motion has been approved with a vote of six to two.
All right. Uh, the PUD concept plan will be heard by the City Council at their Monday, April fifth meeting in twenty-twenty-one at, uh, six P.M. I would now ask for a motion for the preliminary plat. Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Chair Sanderson. I would move for approval of the preliminary plat, PP dash zero-two dash two-one dash seven-six-six-eight, Brookside Estates at Chapman Farms, lots one through eighty, with the six staff conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. We have a motion and I'll next, next recognize Commissioner Billups.
This is Commissioner Billups and I would second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Tom Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Ashley Hose, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Excuse me. Commissioner Banks, no.
Commissioner Billups.
Commissioner Billups, aye.
Commissioner Peel. Commissioner Mitchell Peel. Come at that time. Uh, Commissioner Travis Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel. Okay, could you state your vote again, please? You're muted, miss. There you go.
Commissioner, you did.
No, I did not. Could you repeat? Can you hear me, Mr. Peel?
Did you answer me, Karen, right?
Yes. Could you please repeat your vote?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, um, Commissioner Mitchell Peel, no.
And I called on, um, Commissioner Travis Graham and Chair Sanderson.
Uh, Chair Sanderson, uh, aye.
Okay. And that motion is carried with a vote for six to two.
All right. Uh, okay. Yeah, that's it on that one. So this is all the testimony to be heard on these items. Uh, so if you'd like to leave the meeting, please do so now. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, next items are four and five for Proverb Estates and the applicant has requested for those to be continued to the Monday, April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission Agenda Meeting. So I would ask for a motion to continue those items.
Commissioner Cradoff requests to speak.
Commissioner Cradoff.
I motion that, that, uh, request be moved.
All right. So we have a motion and I'll next recognize Commissioner Banks.
I'll second that motion to, uh, continue to April the twelfth, items four and five.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Ken Billups.
Commissioner Billups, aye.
Commissioner Peel. Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Can you hear me, Karen?
Um, no, could you please repeat? Okay, Commissioner Tom Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Ashley Hose, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Uh, Commissioner Mitchell Peel. Chair Sanderson.
Uh, Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay. Uh, Chair, we'll go ahead and, um, just mark that, Mitchell, Commissioner Peel could not vote. And so that's a, an approval of seven to zero.
Okay.
To continue.
All right. Uh, item seven is other business. Any other business from staff?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, Mike Mallon. I just wanted to say that we, uh, obviously will have a meeting on April twelfth, um, because we just had those items continued and we do have some other items for that agenda. And I also wanted to, uh, take this moment to thank Nathan Jury for his service at the city. Tonight is his last Planning Commission meeting as he has, uh, accepted a, a planner position, uh, with, uh, another city in the metro area. And so, uh, he's, uh, worked for the city for a little over five years and just wanted to, uh, thank him very much for all of his service and let him know that we will miss him and, uh, uh, thank him again. So that is all that staff has for other business.
Well, Mr. Drake, congratulations on your new role and, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you as well. Um, you guys made it easy. I'll miss you guys.
Same here. Okay. Any other, uh, I guess, any other business from the Commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Banks.
If I could at this time, uh, Mr. Chair, thank Mr. Jerry very much. I've been, he's, I've been working with him for the five years he's been on, so thank you very much. And you've done a great job. And best wishes.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. Any other business from the Commissioners? Okay. Hearing none, then I would ask, uh, for a motion to adjourn. Uh, Commissioner Banks.
I'm sorry. I, I'm just fast, I guess. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Very good. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Commissioner Graham.
Yes, thank you, Chair Sanderson. I'll second that motion to adjourn.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. So we are adjourned. Uh, please immediately hang up, uh, by clicking the red phone icon and everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.